Well, good evening everyone. Today is Monday, June 16th. It is 6:00 PM and it's time for the councilman gentleman. It's time for our. For the council meeting for the evening. So please stand with me. May Madam Clerk, will we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadder.
Here.
For Laura Sella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
Mayor Willen is not yet in attendance. You have a quorum.
Thank you. And if you would stand with me and put and pledge allegiance to our class.
Hi.
Just trying to read that one.
Sure.
Okay. At this time on our agenda, uh, we're we're gonna ask Mayor Dodsworth if she would join Councilmember Lars. Councilwoman Pearson at the stadium to receive a proclamation.
Flying by the seat of our pants a little bit up here today. All right. So this is an exciting proclamation. Um, just learning about this right now. So, um, we. Myself and all of the council members, um, city staffs, city residents, very excited that you've, um. Been able to to help dedicate so much time, um, of your personal time and and work here at the at the city. So with that, I will, uh, read this proclamation. Whereas Mary Dodsworth served the Lakewood City of Lakewood with distinction and professionalism as the Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services. Following 15 years of service with the Town of Silicon. And whereas Mary Dodsworth was hired. As Parks Manager and promoted to the position of Parks Recreation and Community Services Director, a title she held 24 years. And whereas during her tenure, Mary Dodsworth demonstrated an unwavering commitment, leadership and dedication. To Lakewood community. And whereas under Mary Dodsworth's guidance, the city parks, trails, recreational programs and community services. Have flourished, enhancing the quality of life for residents of all ages and fostering a stronger, more connected community. And whereas. Mary Dodsworth has played a key role in in the transformation, development and stewardship of Lakewood's parks and open spaces. Ensuring access to safe, vibrant and inclusive place for all residents to enjoy. And whereas. Mary Dodsworth expanded recreational recreation programs and access to recreation throughout the establishment of community events such as. The Lakewood Farmers Market, Summer Fest, Summer Concert Series and Truck and Tractor Day. And whereas, under Mary Dodsworth's leadership, the city secured numerous grants. That brought vital resources to enhance public spaces and support programs and special community events for residents of all ages. And whereas throughout her career, Dodsworth has been recognized at regional and national levels for her professional contributions. She received the National Recreation and Parks Association Young Professionals Award. And was an active member of the Washington Recreation and Parks Association. Whereas. Dodsworth served in numerous leadership roles, including as President of the Washington Recreation and Parks Association. And was honored with multiple awards, culminating with her induction as a Hall of as a Honor Fellow in 2014. The organization's highest honor. And whereas she has received the Commander's Award for Public Service from the Department of Army and at Joint Base Lewis McCord. A reflection of her outstanding partnership and support of the military community. And whereas Mary Dodsworth. Has announced her retirement effective June 13th, 2025, leaving her legacy of leadership, collaboration and community building. That has shaped Lakewood into the vibrant city it is today. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby honors. And expresses deepest appreciation for Mary Dodsworth's exemplary service and heartfelt contribution to the Lakewood community. And urges residents to join in recognizing and celebrating her outstanding achievements and well-earned retirement. Proclaimed this 16th day of June, 2025, Mayor Wayland, Deputy Mayor Moss and the rest of the Lakewood City Council. I wasn't sure. Yeah, thank you. If you'd like to have any words.
Sure. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's great. Well, City Council, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and all of the council members and staff. Thank you very much for this beautiful proclamation. It was very kind to do that. Um, you know, it was a joy and a privilege to work with the City of Lakewood. Um, it was, it's a wonderful community. Um, there's a lot of things on here that were done because of all of the support from our staff. Support from council, of course, but all of the organizations in the city. I mean, it's such a collaborative community. They made it easy. It made it fun. And I was really happy to serve as long as I did. And I'll be around, so you'll probably see me at all the fun stuff. Uh, the farmers markets and all the great events. So anyway, thank you very much for this. It was, it was really wonderful for you to do that and I appreciate your support.
If you'll join us up front, we'll do a photo. Thank you so much, Councilmember Pearson. Uh, we do fly all and us pay the seat of our pants sometimes, but we get through it. So thank you so much. And next, next on our agenda, I'm gonna ask if Councilmember Rarsella will will have Kurt. And I'm gonna mess up your name. I apologize. Colus. The Governor Relations Administrator for to present a proclamation. So, thank you so much.
All right. So, uh, I know this is Mayor Wayland's, uh, baby as our representative for Pierce Transit. So I'll try and try and do it justice. Our transit system is our backbone that connects all of our residents to the rest of the world. So thank you for all that you do. Uh, and I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas the City of Lakewood is served by two transit agencies, Pierce Transit and Sound Transit. That provide public transportation via bus, commuter or light rail, shuttle, paratransit, rideshare and a runner van. And whereas in 2024, Pierce Transit provided almost 6.8 million passenger trips by bus. 308,021 shuttle trips, 362,661 rideshare trips. And 52,379 runner trips in Pierce County. One million of those bus trips were free rides to youth 18 years and younger. And whereas in 2024, Sound Transit provided 920,000 T-line passenger trips. 1.7 million sounder S-line trips and 2.6 million Pierce Transit operated express bus trips in Pierce County. And whereas 55% of Pierce Transit riders do not have access to a personal vehicle and 32% have an annual income under $30,000. More than half ride transit to get to work or to look for work and nearly 40% ride transit to get to a healthcare appointment. And whereas Pierce Transit has served the South Sounds, served as the South Sounds' primary locally-based public transportation system since 1980. Serving the cities and towns in the public transportation benefit area for 45 years. And whereas Pierce Transit has provided more than 473 million bus trips since service began in 1980. Connecting residents of our communities with important destinations such as work, school, medical appointments, everyday errands and social and community events. And whereas Sound Transit has been funding ST Express service between Pierce County and King County since 1999. Removing thousands of single occupancy vehicles from our highways every day, reducing traffic congestion and carbon emissions. And whereas Pierce Transit provides an important lifeline to individuals who qualify for paratransit service under the Americans Disability Act. And since 1980 has provided approximately 16 million trips to community members who depend on this service. And whereas Pierce Transit has provided more than 24 million rideshare trips over the past 45 years. Connecting thousands of employees from both large and small employers across the region with a time and cost savings alternative to driving alone. And whereas transit in Washington today reduces 371 million or 371,000 metric tons of CO2 emissions per year. If all people driving alone were to shift to transit, we can save 130,000 metric tons of CO2 emissions per year. Equal to about 28,272 passenger vehicles driven for one year. And whereas public transportation investments generate 31% more jobs per dollar than new construction of roads and bridges. An investment in transit can yield 49,700 jobs for $1 billion invested and offer a five-to-one economic return. And whereas greater transit use is associated with higher levels of physical activity, which is associated with lower health risks and better health outcomes. Now therefore, the City Lakewood City Council do hereby designate the month of June 2025 as Ride Transit Month. In the City of Lakewood and encourages residents, community organizations and decision-makers to ride, promote and celebrate public transportation. As a key aspect of mobility in the City of Lakewood. Proclaimed this 16th day of June, 2025, signed by the Mayor, Deputy Mayor and all of us on council.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Moss, um, council members and community members joining us here live or virtually. I'm Kurt Colvis, Government Relations Administrator for Pierce Transit. And I am proud to be here to accept this proclamation on behalf of the agency and the transit riding community for Ride Transit Month. Uh, you know, since the Chair of our Board, Mayor Wayland, is not joining us this evening, you can blame him for how stat-packed and long the resolution was, but. Just really appreciate y'all bringing it forward. You know, this year marks 45 years of Pierce Transit serving the people of this region. For more than four decades, we've connected communities, supported local economies and helped make our streets more safe, sustainable and accessible for all. Public transit, you know, it's really about more than just getting people from point A to point B. Um, you know, it's about opportunity, equity and really serves as an economic driver. For our communities. It connects people to jobs, schools, healthcare and most importantly, to each other. I want to thank the City of Lakewood for your ongoing partnership and support. Um, I'm proud to accept this proclamation on behalf of the entire team at Pierce Transit. Whose dedication really keeps our community moving every single day. Um, and as we celebrate Ride Transit Month, let's continue to work together. To build a future where taking transit is not just possible, but is a preferred solution for getting you where you're going. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. Next on our agenda is public comment. Public comments accessible by mail, email, uh, live, virtual or in-person comments. The comments can be received by mail in advance to Rihanna Schumacher, the City Clerk of City of Lakewood. Main 6,000 Main Street Southwest in Lakewood, Washington, 98499. Or to be Schumacher, cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting. Have begun will be provided to the City Council electronically. Please, um, okay. Members of the audience may comment on items related to any matter relating to the city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited three minutes per person. Virtual comments, if you would like to provide a virtual or live virtual public comment. You will need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling by telephone dial 1-253-215-8782. And enter the meeting ID number 686-7263-2373 or visit zoom.us and enter the meeting ID. 868-7263-2373. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name. Use the raise hand feature to be called upon. For those participating by calling in by telephone to use the raise hand feature. Press the star nine on your phone. And when you are unmuted, please provide your name and city of residence. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. To speak. Outside the public comment, all attendees on Zoom will be will continue to have. The ability to virtually raise your hand for the duration of the meeting. You will not be called upon or acknowledged. And your microphone will remain muted except for when you are called upon. The mayor, okay, so tonight we start, we alternate our, um. In-house or outhouse, outside calls. So tonight we start, uh, virtual hands speak first. So Mr. Miss City Clerk, we have one panelist showing Christina Manetti.
Yes, and Deputy Mayor, for the record, the City Council received no written comments in advance of this evening's meeting. And our first speaker is Christina Manetti.
Thank you. Christine Manetti, you are on.
Well, can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Um. Hello? Hello? Hello?
I hear you.
Oh, you hear me? Okay, great. Um, so I have two comments, one on behalf of the nonprofit and then one for myself. Christina Manetti, Gary O'Colish in Lakewood. Um, we'd like to remind people of just a few few highlights from Mrs. Dodd-Forth's tenure as Parks Director. There is the scandalous Edgewater Park situation. Mrs. Dodsworth has enthusiastically overseen the quote-unquote master plan. That involved condemning and demolishing the house of a hard-working healthcare worker on Lake Silicon in the public service. For four boat trailer parking spaces on a tiny once one-acre strip of a park, in addition to that one-acre strip. A plan which will further trash this neighborhood, of course, the effects of which we are already seeing. The cutting down of at least 140 trees in 2016 at Fort Silicon Park. Allowing and even encouraging people to fish in toxic waters unlike on Lake Silicon instead of arranging for the removal. Of the toxic creosote-covered pilings as recommended by the Department of Natural Resources. And not telling people, of course, that they should not consume the fish either. Cutting down of at least 36 trees, including two oaks and seven madronas and large Douglas firs at Fort Silicon for a walking path. Next to a large open field. More so-called improvements at Ward's Park. Natural buffer around the wetland appears to have been replaced with lawn already and the current improvements. Include more impervious surfaces for a pump track, how how to be active without actually exercising. That will increase runoff into the wetland and increase the heat island effect next to the wetland, as well as a dog park. Which of course will contribute fecal matter into the wetland. There are the toxic baseball fields at Fort Silicon. She allowed in a park under her jurisdiction for there to be installed a baseball field with artificial turf. That almost certainly includes a backing of toxic crumb rubber, which not only is suspected of in the cancers of youth and adult athletes around America. But also leaches 6 PPD quinine into the ground and water table, which is known to be acutely toxic to fish, including endangered salmon. Wahaup Lake disaster, three applications of alamid overly high concentrations resulted in the effect of sterilization of the lake. Making it more kintu-. in the effect of sterilization of the lake, making it more akin to a swimming pool and even more alkaline, according to the longtime water steward. The Audubon Christmas bird count after treatment had five mallards, whereas before, the Audubon Bird Counter said that they used to count up to 1,000 waterfowl. Shootings, of course, the cherry on the cake, this is not her fault, of course, but it did happen during her tenure, are the shootings we have at our parks now in Lakewood. Mass shooting recently at Harry Todd Park during a Disney movie at Fort Stillcom Park a couple of years ago, and one at Active Park as well. Thank you for allowing us to recall just a few of the important events and contributions during Mrs. Dodsworth's time as Parks Director. And now, one from, from me personally, Christina Minetti, Lakewood. I'd like to share with you my most vivid memory of Mrs. Dodsworth. It is she who once told me after a city council meeting in the foyer that the sidewalks on Phillips Road had to go in on the side that required the cutting down of 12 or so big old garyoaks, which are supposed, of course, to be protected in the state of Washington. The sidewalks, as she told me, had to go on the side that would require the cutting down of all the big old protected garyoaks because there was a grant, you see, and the grant could only be used in the census tract that happened to stop on that side of the road. That's why the sidewalks couldn't be put on the other side of the road where the former game farm is, where there would have not been even one tree that needed to be cut down. I said, in that case, you wait until there's a grant for the other side. This whole exchange was eye-opening for me. She said it as if it were completely natural and normal, as if one does whatever is necessary to be able to use grant money, even if it results in terrible irreversible destruction of critical habitat comprised of a protected keystone species. It also laid bare some homeowner's backyard to the road, exposing his previously shaded yard to the sun, stripping it of the oaks he loved. They were the reason why he bought the house. But no one, including Mrs. Dodsworth, seems to think of the environment, the oaks and other trees, the people that are being affected by this disturbingly regular destruction of the natural environment in Lakewood. Mrs. Dodsworth, why couldn't you have been the one to stand up and say, this is not right? I am the Parks Director. I am here to advocate for the preservation, not only of natural spaces in our parks, but to speak up when I see people in my city undertaking mindless destruction of what makes Lakewood special. Unfortunately, this will not be part of Mrs. Dodsworth's legacy, but it can be part of the legacy of the rest of you if you start speaking up for the environment, our trees, our wildlife, and our people's quality of life. Thank you very much for the time.
Next hand I see is John Dunlap.
Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Hi, my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a Lakewood resident. I was just thinking about Edgewater Park. I do walk past Edgewater Park most days, and you know, it's interesting what's going on with Edgewater Park because you destroyed Dr. Majerli's house, it's sort of got leveled, and now it's just a plain sort of expanse of grass. And as I understand it, you're planning on turning it into a parking lot. Now, when you actually walk past that expanse of grass, it's actually, it's quite a sizable piece of land, at least compared to the rest of Edgewater Park. Edgewater Park is, as we all know, is a very small park, and it's just, it's just a strip of land, it's a tiny strip of land. And it seems now that you actually see Dr. Majerli's old former house just as a strip of grass, you actually realize that a rather very, rather high percentage of that park is, is that piece of grass. And so it seems to me incredible, given you decided to knock down that house and to, to take control of it, that you are going to just turn that into a boat launch. You know, you could say from a sort of perspective of public access, you know, most people don't have large boats, and most people have, you know, okay, they can carry a boat to the, to the, to the lake. You could, you could argue, well, okay, given you've decided to supposedly liberate this piece of land, it seems such a strange thing to happen in a, in a sort of a community that says claims to put such a high store in property owners' rights, that somehow Dr. Majerli's land has effectively been sort of almost, well, collectivized. But now that the people have access to his land, or his former land, well, I suppose you might as well keep giving them access, but no, you seem to be still thinking about turning it into a, into a, into a parking lot for those people who, who have huge boats. Of course, it's, the park is so seasonal, I mean, it's for sort of eight months out of the year, it's not really used for, for very much. And, you know, one wonders if you really are planning on turning it into a parking lot. I don't know, I think you've got some environmental issues, and you've got runoff, and you've got fuel, and you've got all sorts of issues to really turn it into a parking lot. But if it does become a parking lot, you know, one wonders what it's going to become. I mean, I'm thinking, you know, you just had that shooting in the park sort of some weeks ago, and I think you could, you could imagine Edgewater Park coming like that, that parking lot probably going to be a good place to do drug deals, and of course, but probably that needs, that needs extra policing. And I don't know, I don't know, are you really thinking, are you really thinking about what's actually going to happen with Edgewater Park? Because you do need a strategy, and I don't think you've got a very good strategy, and I certainly don't think it should be turned into a parking lot, assuming you're going to be allowed to do that. So yeah, I think you've got some more work to do here.
Madam Clerk, that's all the raised hands I see. Are there any others?
Deputy Mayor, there are no other virtual hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Then we move to ones that have signed in, and that's Sherri Arkell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss and council members and staff. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. When the public, I'm talking about street ends, when the public is treated as if they are too feeble to care for natural resources like our public lakes, expect to receive some pushback. For 29 years of cityhood, elected and appointed leadership failed to articulate any cohesive plan for Lake Street Ends. All of the surveys completed at taxpayer expense did little to push for greater access until citizens took action and forced the issue. Nine months after the 100th Street cleanup by volunteers, there has been little progress made. Summer is heating up. Where is the volunteer coordinator or an articulated plan? On May 9, 2025, the Lakewood Weekly Managers Bulletin posted in The Suburban Times and on Lakewood Life that permits were needed to do any volunteer cleanup. It also said for citizens to report anyone they saw working on the street ends. I immediately went to the city's website to obtain a permit, and none existed. No one, not one bit of information was offered. On May 13, I went to the permit desk at the city where no one was able to answer any questions about a street end permit. That's because they did not exist. On May 22, I finally received an email asking me to fully explain what I intended to clean up and how I was going to do it. There was no form to fill out, no standardized process had been created. On June 5, I, I sent back my response along with recommendations to make the process more efficient. I included a photograph of what I would be removing, blackberries and ivy. I then received back notification that the city was creating a new permit process to be launched on June 16. That's today. I went to the link, and that permit process is not up and running. My thoughts with the best of intentions. The city needs a volunteer coordinator sooner than later. Stop encouraging volunteers or visitors to street ends to be questioned or harassed by lakefront property owners. Words and actions matter. Clean up the website and make it user-friendly. Your messages out to the public need to be accurate and helpful. You have citizens who are stepping up to help create a better city. Stop treating them like they are the problem. This issue is not going to go away. Other cities have figured out this about street ends, and so can we if we work together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Mr. John Burns.
Thank you, everyone, for being here today, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is John Burns, and I am a resident of Lakewood. I'm an advocate for the street ends that were set aside by the state of Washington, for the city of Lakewood to manage and the public's use. Before, the council is a motion today with a request and a recommendation to fund a contract to modify city processes and procedures. It's motion 2050-37. Changes are expected in the city process, permitting process affecting the lakefront's right-of-way code enforcement of encroachments and public access vacation procedures. Any changes could improve, continue to hinder, or further hinder the public access of the lakes of Lakewood. As it is, the few waterfront parks we have are overused, and every effort needs to be taken to increase lakefront access to relieve the strain on our waterfront parks. I recommend that the city council take no action on this motion today. Let's wait for an experienced, competent, and wise city manager, such as Doug Russell, to be firmly in place to oversee critical updates. Let's get changes done right the first time with proper manager, city manager leadership, open and honest communication, and a full city council, city and citizen participation. No doubt, work needs to be done on city processes and procedures, but a city policy is worthless without enforcement. The city did not enforce the right-of-way policy it has on the books under the last city manager. Allowing encroachers to continue to occupy public property without written notice is bad for the public and reflects poorly on the city. It is not a good idea to allow the city to further water down policies that impact public access to Lakewood lakes with this spirit. The city of Lakewood has a reputation of street end neglect and selective enforcement of right-of-way encroachments. You know, so let's see if we can't get that problem fixed. Okay? Please encourage public access to the lakes of Lakewood. I recommend that the city council take no action on the motion 2050-37, and let's get it done right the first time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, our consent agenda, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry, at this moment, I would like to close public comments, and I would declare the public comment closed.
Consent agenda, A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of June 2, 2025; B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of June 9, 2025; C, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of June 11, 2025; D, motion number 2025-37, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Keller Associates in the amount of $198,700 to assist in updating the Lakewood Municipal Code Title 12 and the Engineering Standards Manual; E, motion number 2025-38, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Secanti, Inc., in the amount of $5,760,819 for the Niaza Road, Gravely Lake Drive South to Gravely Lake Drive North project; F, motion number 2025-39, authorizing the award of a construction contract to Sound Pacific Construction LLC in the amount of $3,201,150 for the Interlock and 112th Idlewild to Washington Boulevard to Idlewild Elementary Project; G, motion number 2025-40, authorizing the execution of an agreement with fence specialists in the amount of $98,814.75 for fencing for Dog Park at Fort Stillcom Park; H, items filed in the office of the city clerk, 1, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of March 25, 2025; 2, Public Safety Advisory Committee Meeting Minutes of April 2, 2025; and 3, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board Meeting Minutes of May 1, 2025.
Madam Mayor pro tem, I have a point of order for you. If there is any item that a council member wishes to remove from consent agenda, this is the time to do that.
In absence of the mayor? I would request that I move item C from the consent agenda.
That does not require a second of any sort. The council now moves forward considering the consent agenda without item C.
So can I have a motion? Mr. Branson?
I would also like to remove item F.
In the absence of item C and F, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I move, I move approval of the consent agenda with the removal of items C and F.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So this consent agenda have been approved, the exception of item F and C.
So Madam Mayor, in terms again of order, what is now before the council is item C that has been removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Madam Clerk, I mean, Madam Attorney, whoever I am. I'm requesting to remove the, from the consent agenda, item C. The minutes, from the minutes of our council special meeting on June 11, 2025. Can I have a second? Is there a second?
Yes, yes, Deputy Mayor, I, I think that I would move approval of item C.
Okay. Now you can discuss, it's in play in front of the council.
Thank you. My request to remove item C is because I have some concerns in reference to the choice of a new city manager. And I think if, I request him to remove the consent agenda to correct the vote count of the city council special meeting on June 11, 2025. I shared during discussion prior to the final vote that Mr. Russell was not my first choice. And during the voting, I did not vote for or against. I abstain. There was no roll call, which is normal procedure when the majority vote is yes. I abstain from voting, thinking that the basis that me sharing my concern that he was not my first choice and not voting for or against would be noted in the minutes, which they were not. My misunderstanding. Mr. Russell rose to the top of the, Mr. Russell rose to the top of the list based on his, the success he've had in his city. He has accomplished many of the things that we are trying to accomplish in Lakewood, such as the development of an identifiable downtown. My concern with, my concern is Mr. Russell is coming to us from a population just over 31,000, which is half the size of Lakewood. That's not to say that he will not be successful. My concern is how involved our residents are, and the long late nights that we spend in order to reach a decision to serve the majority of our residents is a concern for me. Mr. Russell will be working with a population twice the size of Lakewood. That will be a steep curve to climb. Another concern I had was when I joined the council over 16 years ago, I agreed to work with all citizens in Lakewood. Lakewood is heavily populated in diversity. We have spent lots of time, money, and resources in an effort to embrace the diversity in our community. I could not, in good conscience, vote yes, knowing that Mr. Russell is coming to us with very little experience on diversity. With the population of just over 31,000 and a recording of 89% identifying as white was a huge concern for me. Lakewood is heavily diversified. I felt that if I voted, I would be doing a disservice to the diverse population in our city by selecting someone with little experience on diversity, as heavily diversified as Lakewood is. That's not to say he will not be successful. It's just that he is not coming to the table with a lot of experience on diversity. It's just that he is not coming to the table with a lot of experience on diversity. Having said that, I believe Mr. Russell will do the best job he can in this area. I am confident that he will have the support from myself, the staff, and my colleagues to do the job. I have just over five and a half months left to serve on the council. However, after leaving the council as the founder, president, and CEO of the Lakewood Multicultural Coalition, I will be available and willing to work with Mr. Russell or anyone in the capacity I can on diversity. So that is why I moved to amend the minutes of the city council's special meeting as of June eleventh, twenty twenty five, to correct the vote on the motion to have Mr. Doug Russell be the next city manager to reflect. The vote was six, yea, and one abstain. With that, is my complaint.
You're looking for a second on the motion to amend.
Second.
It has been moved a second that we will amend the minutes for our special meeting on June eleventh, twenty twenty five. Mr. Brandstetter?
Yeah, Madam Deputy Mayor, I have no problem amending the minutes to reflect the deputy mayor's actual intent on the day in question. As I recall the meeting, that during the discussion of the motion that the deputy mayor did indicate that she had reservations and would be not voting aye on the motion. That, and then when there was a vote, neither did she vote nay, essentially she abstained as she was. So my only question would be, is the documenting the votes as seven ayes, rather than six ayes as an exception, was that a is that a Scrivener's error that we have to correct with legislative action today? Or is that something that the city clerk can administratively correct?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Brandstetter. I think you know that both the city clerk and myself will get you to Scrivener's error almost every time if we can. But your votes, each of your votes are substantive in nature as far as we're concerned. It is the legislative record of the city. And so I would say it's not a Scrivener's error and the council does need to vote. And I have advised, when I got an inquiry about this potential vote tonight, that it really is subject to the council owning these minutes. And so, as you've expressed, this would be more consistent with the way that you saw it. But if a council member doesn't agree that that's the way the minute should read, then it's really up to each council member to vote.
Thank you. Then I'm going to vote in favor of the motion because I think it'll result in a set of minutes that more accurately reflects the conversations and actions of that evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I too, I have no, I'm up for amending the special meeting notes. I would like to speak to the fact of diversity of me being Mexican, so Mexican-American. And in Lakewood, I do believe that that is the largest population is Hispanic population here. So I see that day to day. I do have a commitment to diversity sitting here on the council. I did keep that in consideration when we were interviewing. I do also run the race and equity program in my current job, and I have a lot of background as a diversity trainer. So I appreciate Deputy Mayor Moss's comments on it. It is something that I did definitely keep in mind when we were interviewing, and it is something that's very important to me. So I wanted to voice that, and that moving forward, obviously, is something that I will keep as a priority. And even in your last five and a half months after that, I am here. So I just wanted you to know that, and I support this decision to amend the notes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? So at this point, I will say that the item C has been amended and approved.
You have to vote on the amendment.
Are there any?
You're asking for a vote on the amendment?
Vote on the amendment? No, we have to identify F. We're gonna, I'm asking for.
On the amendment, I vote aye.
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 The amended motion is now before you for action.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is an explanation.
Take a vote on the amended minutes of the city council meeting, special meeting of June eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Okay. Now we will vote on the amended minute for June eleventh, twenty twenty five, our special meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I will just remind you that you also pulled item F, so that's now before you. And I will tell you, on the outside chance that your mayor thought tonight started at seven, if we get to new business, we could by motion of the council floor that for after some of the discussion, so he can be there for that if you want to. Just call on me and I'll walk you through that.
Would, are there any objections to holding off that F until the mayor is here?
At this point, we're looking at item number F, motion number twenty twenty five dash thirty nine.
Daily and concern about item F that I?
I'm sorry, I think I confused you. You have item F before you. It has nothing to do with the mayor. Different question. Sorry. So?
I move approval of motion number twenty twenty five dash thirty nine.
Second.
Open for discussion? Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brandstetter?
Yeah, Deputy Mayor and my colleagues, I want to tell you that I pulled this off of the consent agenda. And I could as easily have taken twenty twenty five dash thirty eight off, okay? It had to do with this, this is a contract for the road work that we're going to be doing on Interlock and one twelfth and Idlewild, and being able to go and do that. And that in the bid tabulation and in the thing over there, for the first time that I have ever noticed it, there was a line item that said apprenticeship incentive penalty. And it included an item that was required for all of the people who were bidding to do something. And it was I had trouble understanding exactly what that is, as to why the city would be paying a penalty regarding apprenticeship incentives, which is what it sounds like. And I did ask the interim city manager for some clarification, but I have to say that she responded to me, but that I didn't fully understand what it is we're doing, and particularly why the word penalty is in the is in the bid line item. And so I'm wondering if I could get a more complete definition of why with these two contracts that are in the agenda tonight, that they appeared now in doing that? And what's the policy at play?
Deputy Mayor, we have Troy Potwinski, the Capital Projects Manager.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and members of the council. So yes, we do have two line items on these separate contracts for apprenticeship utilization. It's either a penalty or an incentive. It is a new RCW that was put into place effective July first, twenty twenty four. So this is the first time we have had this. We have had several contracts. It's for contracts over two million dollars, first of all. In July first, twenty twenty six, it goes down to one and a half million, and then it'll, in twenty twenty eight, it will actually go down to one million. The idea behind it is legislatures trying to bring apprenticeship in for new growth people coming into the sorry about that, into the workforce. So it is a new RCW that we are complying with. It does require that we set up a bid item for the contractor to either get paid out at the end of the contract a certain amount, or there is a penalty that we calculate based upon the percentage of hours that they did not meet their goal by. So each of these contracts has a number of hours in it. For Niaza, it'd be ten thousand hours. They need to have fifteen percent utilization on that, or fifteen hundred hours of apprenticeship. So one in six labors out there need to be, or they're so abouts need to be, an apprentice on it. So that is the purpose behind having the bid item that you see there.
So let me just, to be sure that I understand, is that we are not, by putting that bid item in there, encouraging contractors to not use apprentices? But are we giving them a way out, saying if you don't use apprentices, it'll only cost you two thousand dollars?
No, it's calculated based upon, for instance, for the way it's calculated, for Niaza, if they choose not to use apprentices at all, and they use ten thousand hours of other people that are not apprentices, it's ten dollars an hour times the number of hours they didn't get. So it'd be a fifteen thousand dollar penalty that, at the end of the day, they cut a check back to the city of Lakewood for fifteen thousand dollars because they did not meet the goal. It's, the incentive is only, the five thousand for Niaza or the two thousand for Interlock and Idlewild and one hundred and twelve, is only a lump sum payment that they get. They get either five thousand or two thousand dollars when they make the goal at the end. If they do not make the goal at the end, they cut a check back to the city.
Okay, so let me, since we're dealing with the Interlock and one, because that's the one I asked to take off. And the line item is two thousand dollars, okay, which was our engineer estimate. So is that two thousand dollars reflect that the city will pay the contractor two thousand dollars if they fully meet the requirement to use apprentices?
Yes. Yes.
But that if they don't fully meet it, it's not that all they got to pay us back is two thousand? There's some other formula?
There is, and it varies. It's based upon the dollar amount. So if they get zero percent of apprenticeship, it's ten dollars per hour that they didn't make. If they get one to forty nine percent, I believe it's seven dollars and fifty cents an hour, and it progresses downward as you go up the scale to where it's two dollars an hour between ninety percent and ninety nine percent. So it's kind of an odd progression, but that's what the state has set up for us to use.
Okay, well, and I appreciate the clearer to understand explanation. I guess, you know, my reason why I didn't want to just let it go of saying it's only two thousand dollars had to do with, in my background, when I was at a technical college, there was a lot of effort of trying to get people into apprenticeships and to get people who were doing work to use apprentices to be able to move young people forward into the trades to be able to go through and do that. So I guess, as your explanation, I'm satisfied that we're not creating an incentive to not use apprentices, that we're doing the opposite thing, which is what I think is the right right way for the city. I guess maybe it's unfortunate that there had to be an RCW that that codified penalties for folks on public contracts that didn't follow the apprenticeship norms that were there, have been there for quite some time. So I do that. And Deputy Mayor, this conversation actually satisfies my reason for taking this off the consent agenda, and I'm certainly going to vote through approval of approving this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Brandstetter. So all in favor of approving motion number twenty thirty, twenty twenty five dash thirty nine? Number F, vote by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. At this time, I would like to acknowledge the mayor is, has appeared. Thank God.
He manifested believing once again that the third Monday is not the second Monday and vice versa, so my apologies on that. So we've now moved through the consent agenda. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We now turn to the regular agenda. We have no unfinished business. We turn to new business. First motion is twenty twenty five dash forty one. Madam Clerk?
Motion number twenty twenty five dash forty one, appointing Doug Russell as city manager effective August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, and authorizing the execution of an employment agreement with Doug Russell.
Thank you very much for that. As council recalls, we had a motion at our last session which authorized me along with key staff to negotiate the agreement with the appointed city manager elect or proposed Doug Russell. And Ms. Walker is here to provide us with a brief overview of that process.
Well, the proposed contract is in the council's packet. It indicates the rate of pay, time off, other benefits. Most of it is consistent with what other senior management at the city gets. One thing I will share that was tweaked was because this person is coming to us midway through the year, I added a clarification, and I believe that this was endorsed by the people who negotiated the contract, that the twelve days of management leave would be prorated to have six days starting August twenty fifth, so it would be as though the year had been running, and then will continue to accrue from there. And that's a slight change from what's in your packet.
So that's effectively going to be interlineated or changed in paragraph? Kind of help us there?
That is, at the bottom of page seventy nine of your packet where it describes leave, the current last sentence says employee shall accrue twelve days of management leave annually, which do not carry over from year to year. The following sentence says that six days will be on his books effective August twenty fifth when he starts. And that change has been made and presented to the city manager, and I think she believes that it's consistent with what the council wanted to do to reflect that clarification, since he's starting partway through the year.
Great. Thank you. Any questions of either Ms. Walker or me with regard to the process? Mr. Brandstetter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, could you summarize how your discussions with Mr. Russell went?
Sure. If we can, let us first get a motion on the table. Do we have a motion to adopt motion twenty twenty five dash forty one?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of motion number twenty twenty five dash forty one.
Second.
Been moved by Councilmember Bokey, seconded by Councilmember Pearson. Then we adopt motion twenty twenty five dash forty one. To your question, Mr. Brandstetter, it was a good conversation. He initially started off with a set of red line edits to Mr. Caulfield's last version to kind of keep the language as consistent as possible to expedite the process, so the discussion really focused on key terms. One was salary, and that was as reflected in the document at two sixty five, which was within the range that we had discussed with regard to the profile development. The only sort of major change was the amount of relocation assistance, and he had asked for a higher number. I went back with staff, and we chatted about what might work for the city and its finances and what was doable, and that is the number that's reflected in the proposed agreement.
So is that number between his ask and our original offer?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, and I guess that I would, wondering if your conversation included anything in around the the realm of annual performance evaluations and whether there and whether there would be one for 2025, or whether the first evaluation would be in 2026, or were we going to do it at some other iteration? You know, this has been, this has been something that's been problematic for years, in that we never seem to get to it in a timely manner. But I, I also am somewhat concerned about doing a performance evaluation effective after, after four months of, of, of being able to go and do that. And I would much prefer to do one, a first performance evaluation that covers either 12 or 16 months to do that. But was that discussed, or is, is that, do you think that the 16 month is a, an allowable thing to do that? Because I also don't necessarily think that after four months we would want to do a, 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 a payment adjustment either.
Correct. So the, the direct response is found, found in paragraph five of page 80 of the packet, which discusses the annual performance evaluation. It's at least once annually. And so to the extent in, so paragraph 5B, we want to define the goals and the performance objectives, my suggestion would be, and we didn't have any direct conversation on it because he was reviewing the language and frankly didn't change this language from what we've had in, in prior agreements with city manager Caulfield. Well, what I think we should do is, after he gets his feet on the ground in the first sort of 30, 45 days, I think we should have, if an executive session is the proper format to do it, we can define goals and objectives upfront, what success would look like during the next 12-month period, and have a open and full conversation about that, given our current council objectives and goals, and talk about what we're looking to achieve, and come to some good agreement and solid understanding of what that should look like over the next 12 months. And then I think council should do the annual evaluation next August or early September.
So I, I, I think that we can do that, and that sounds fine. If, the question is whether a, a council is constituted in November would do that, or whether the cons, council constituted is constituted in January would do that.
I think that's certainly a good point. And probably, you know, again, it's not less than once annually, so it doesn't preclude sort of touching base periodically throughout the year. Whether, I think we should set him off on the right foot in the next 60 to 90 days. And that doesn't keep council as newly constituted in January from doing another touch base, too. And you could then decide the annual evaluation is, you know, maybe the following January. That's completely up to the council, at least once annually. I think that fits the requirements of the document. Oh, Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I totally agree with that. And I think keeping it fluid and kind of see, you know, seeing how things are going. And if he's already building lots of confidence in, in us and the city staff, just to kind of, to monitor that. And, and if we feel that things aren't, you know, maybe going as fittingly as, as we had hoped, then I think that it, that, you know, I'd, I'd recommend having an exec session and chatting, and making sure that we're having the, the right transition that we kind of were hoping for, and, and making sure that things are, you know, his goals and performance objectives are clearly laid out and, and, and that.
Agreed. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Laurella?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with that. I think it makes sense to, to go through an evaluation process after, you know, the first 30 to 60 days, then revisiting as we launch into the new year with new council, probably mid to late January, once new council members have had a chance to get their feet under them as well. And then we can look at six months out, and then to an annual basis after that.
And I just want to put it out there. I, I would invite Mr. Russell and this council, and perhaps an earlier opportunity for the council newly constituted in January to rethink the form, the evaluation form. We have all talked about how much we don't like it. And this is an opportunity to maybe rethink the format and the rating scheme and the context with a new city manager, and get input based on other forms that he has seen and used that have perhaps been more effective and more clear, if you will.
Yeah, well, Mr. Mayor, I, I certainly agree with that. And I think that, given that the, one of the major purposes of, of the annual evaluation is, is to communicate to the city manager. And so if Mr. Russell has some thoughts about a, a, a form or format that would be a good way for, for, for him to receive that communication, that would be important input for, for to have, given that we also need to think about what input we want to impart.
Absolutely. Very good. Well, in the absence of further questions or discussion, all those in favor of motion 2025 dash 41, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion 2025 dash 41 has been adopted unanimously. We have an employment agreement with the new city manager. And I'll be prepared to sign that before we leave tonight, given the calendar. Next item for discussion is the Joint Lakewood Promise Advisory Board meeting. And tonight, we're pleased to have our members Alice Fong and Joyce Love Day. Welcome.
Oh, there's no little thing for it. Well, I think I know enough people here that I don't, I'll be okay. But yeah, it just feels so nice. Good evening, Mayor Wayland and Deputy Mayor Moss, and also council members. Thank you so much for having us here this evening to give you an update on the Lakewood Promise Advisory Board. Myself, I'm the current chair, Alice Fong. And then I have my teammate Joyce Love Day. Joyce Love Day, I love, I love her last name. I wanted to, I know that you appointed all of us, but I also wanted to just give space to our teammates who are also on the advisory board. We have Ron Banner, who is the Clover Park School District, Megan Dempsey, who represents business, myself, I am a resident and a, a part of a nonprofit, Joyce Love Day, who is with the Clover Park Technical College, Carrie Patrick, who is with Communities in School, and then Elijah Sa, 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 Sa Anna, who is our youth council liaison, and Julie White with Pierce College. And then, of course, our wonderful council liaison, council member, Deputy Mayor Moss. And so I just wanted to give you a brief overview, and then, and then Joyce will be able to share a little bit as well. One of the things that we did, and you actually appointed me last, last May. And at the end of that week, we went and had our youth summit, our 2024 Youth Summit. And I just wanted to show you how happy our young people look with their, their group picture of all of our council members. I know you can't see, but you can just like pretend that you see it. But in the, in the beginning of the start of last year, in June, we did our debriefing of the youth council. I mean, yeah, the youth, the summit, a youth summit empowerment summit that we had. And from that, we received a lot of great feedback so that we can start planning for the new year. And so with that, with that reflection, we were able to see how much they have used their voices, and then their liaising with our group to come up with ideas and what we could do for the upcoming year. And so last fall, you know, we did some visioning of what we want to do with youth council. And they brought up some, some ideas. And then we also wanted to think even more broadly. And so we invited various organizations in Lakewood that are serving our youth to hear from them. What are, what are the, the positives, the good, the bad, and the ugly of what's going on so that we can better work together and, and extend, you know, our resources? And so with that, we were able to create some draft set of SMART goals, and then eventually, and that was in the fall, and eventually adopt them in, in November, and have our, our priorities set, and ensure that, again, the full youth council were able to adopt the work that we are embarking on. And so with that, we had a really dynamic and rewarding year. And my colleague, Dr. Lovejoy, will share with that.
Thank you, Alice. And I just want to also publicly appreciate you stepping in the role of chair. And she's done that recently and is giving good leadership to us. Thank you for having us again. It's been my pleasure to serve on the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board for several years. And I just want to comment on how well I feel like it is functioning. What's most exciting to me is the engagement with the young people. And we, it seems like we have a good balance and a good recipe for success in terms of ideas and work occurring with the young people, and support coming from the board to help, help those things come to fruition. So through March, through, from March through June, we have been working on planning and implementing three different events and activities. The first was the 2025 Youth Summit, which occurred in early May. It was held at Harrison Prep, and there were 132 young people who participated at that time. Again, talking about how the young people are engaged, they have, they planned the ideas, they, the breakout session topics. They planned the food, which was a big hit. They developed the fun activities and included things such as, as the community art project. They also created flyers and marketing plans for each of the schools, so how they would get the information out to students. So thank you very much to them. And thank you to Shannon, who works with them outside of Lakewood's Promise, to help facilitate the consistent work that's occurring there. The young people also wanted to do something else this spring and recommended a cook and craft event, which was held at Telecom Community Center. And I didn't write down the date, but they wanted to expand beyond some of the things we had done before. So one of the students knew someone from their connection with APP, ACCP. And they connected with Myra Magao, who came and led the young people who participated in creating Filipino Smash Burgers, which was a big hit. And then the craft event was bead bracelets, necklaces, and keychains. So there were 27 students involved at that, and it engaged students who had not typically been part of the activities before. There's one additional event. It's a new summer event that the young people, I suggested, and that we helped support. And that is going to happen on June 24th. Excuse me, July, excuse me, July 24th. And that is a financial literacy workshop. And that is being done in partnership with Clinton Taylor and Your Money Matters. So you will get more information about that. There's nothing you need to do to, to lead or guide or be actively engaged, but we would love to have you join if you're interested in coming in and seeing what's going on, and possibly giving some input. So we're thrilled with the energy and ideas that the youth council brought to the table during the past year, and the fact that these were able to be implemented. So to close our presentation and share our goals for the year ahead, I'm going to turn it back over to Alice.
Thank you, Joyce. We have a really good team, I have, you can see. You know, we're really excited about our new work plan for this coming year, and then also our vision. You know, we really want to engage more, working with you. So thanks again for appointing us, and then also investing in this opportunity so that we can bring up our next generation of leaders. And so for our conversations that we had for this work plan, we really wanted to focus on four areas. And we did this in conjunction with our young people. And they were like, we need to learn more about our finance. And that is why we're holding this, the partnering with Your Money Matters to do this financial literacy workshop. That is very engaging. I've had a, had a opportunity to volunteer for the event a couple of years now with another school district. And it's engaging, and it really gives young people that hands-on budgeting experience so that they can adult for that, for that day, and learn about, I know, it's like, oh, my gosh. And, and it's, it's really a lot of fun. So if you're able to make it, definitely another plug for you to join us. And so we want to do a little bit more of the youth of financial literacy things. And then also transportation strategies. In the few years that I've been around in Lakewood, definitely being around, involved with the, with the city, that, that transportation thing keeps coming up. And so we're trying to, you know, really be more, you know, work together and figure out what, what can we do with that, better understand the issues, where all the young people are, and then what can we do in, in partnership with that? The next thing is communication strategies, really working with young people. And Shannon has great ideas of working with the young people and thinking about how do we engage more of them so that it's not just the ones on youth council, but also their peers in all of the other schools. And we really open our programming to middle school through high school. And so really stepping up the younger generation to, to come and be involved and, and, and grow as well and develop. And then, of course, you know, our, our five promises. We want to keep those, which are caring adults, that's us, safe places, healthy start, marketable skills, and opportunities to help others. And I think that our programming is always really intentional in, in doing that. And that's not just from me, but from predecessors who brought, put this, this group together. And so, and then, of course, the Youth Summit, the 2026 Youth Summit. So we're planning the dates. And so as soon as that gets selected, it'll be on your calendars to encourage you to come. They, they definitely really enjoy getting to know you all. You're like rock stars to them. They're like, yay, we get to meet the mayor, the deputy mayor, and the council members. And so we really want to have that, extend that connection with you. And again, it's, it's going to be really exciting because some of the students are actually returning from, they were involved in their, you know, freshman year and on. And so it'll be cool to see how they generate and improve on the ideas and make it more fun for more students. And so basically, we're really excited about the new year. And on behalf of the entire advisory board, we want to thank you again for your commitment and support in this. And if you have any questions, let us know.
Well, thank you very much. Questions, Mr. Branstadter and Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chair. I, I have been in, I spent 30 years in the Army, so I'm really good with acronyms usually. But your briefing here kept talking about something called SMART, S M A R T. And I, trying to put the, those letters together with some other comments that you made, and I was not successful.
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. It was on my notes, and so I just read it and, and forgot that we need to have that. Help me out here. Specific is S. M is measurable. A is, huh? Attainable. R is? What is it? Realistic, yes. And then T is timely. We have to be able to do it in a specific time.
Okay, so, 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 as I am looking at, at, at the paper in my, in my, in my agenda, to be able to go and do that, and assuming that your work is all of those things, that to be able to go and do that, and assuming that your work is all of those things, uh, that uh, i- is that something that is going to be guiding the uh, the board and then th- the youth council in going forward in
Yes.
in future years, to be able to go and do that?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, i- it's, it's actually the work, it's actually the work that I, I follow is, is uh SMART goals, and so I think I brought that up, and so when I, I was like, oh, my gosh, I have to remember those words, I sweat bullets. Uh, but yes.
I, 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 I was worried it was about teaching youth how to use their phones, you know, and
I think they're teaching us. Uh, yes, and it, it's really uh in, in the nonprofit world and also in the business world, they, they kind of use this acronym to make sure that when we're setting these goals, we can actually attain them. Uh, we can, we fulfill them in a timely manner uh that we can measure it to, to be able to adjust um accordingly when, when needed, uh, and it's specific. Yeah, sometimes we, we set these goals that are really high, and then we're not able to, you know, really make it um uh attainable, tangible and actionable, and so this is our way of of making it specific so that we can, you know, uh, you know, accomplish our goals and then go to the next um, next goal and so forth. And then this is also another transferable skill that the young people can utilize in uh wherever they, they land in their careers and life.
Well, certainly, um, I, I, I do want to say that trying to keep that high expectations for young people and of uh helping them to do that. I know that this next week, I'm going to be at the Association of Washington City's uh annual conference, and uh, uh, again, a Lakewood student will have been selected for a Quality Communities Scholarship. That, she, she will be the seventh Lakewood student in the twelve years that this program has been, been, been ongoing, which is more than any other city in the state of Washington has had to be able to go and do that. And I think that's a reflection of, of all, all in the community, that, you know, y- your community represents a lot of folks that are interested in, 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 in helping young people, challenging young people to meet, to meet their potential and, 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 and not just have the potential to be leaders, but to actually be leaders, okay, to be able to go and do that. So, you know, I, I, I appreciate the fact that you are engaged and you, that you are engaged with young people for their benefit, okay, and that, that, that we're, that we're not going to do that. I, I think I'll just make one comment about your, your other work plan thing, and that is, is that the, the transportation issue is um, been a very, very difficult solution to, to, to come up with. It, it really, uh, time and again, eh, we, we hear that it, it is a a hindrance to young people being able to do as much as, as, as they would want to be able to be able to go and do that. And, and my observations of it is that there have been lots of proposals about how to help transportation, and they're usually made by adults who are saying, what can we pay for? Okay, uh, and, and they don't generally stem from youth saying, this is what we need. Um, so if you can somehow work that into your conversation around that issue, uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll see, see to be able to go and do that, because transportation is a complicated issue for young people because it's got the, um, you, you, while, while it may have a cost to, thing to do that, it has a uh, a question of where are the destinations, okay, and, and what is the timeframe? So, uh, that's not an easy task to resolve and, and, and make a difference in, but I hope that you're able to, 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 to make some headway with that uh as you are with the other things, and uh, I have to say the youth summits have been progressively um, more uh, uh innovative and, and, and progressively more uh student plan uh is going on, and I sort of look forward to that continuing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a liaison for the Promise Board, I cannot pass up an opportunity to compliment my youth. So I'm, I was going to say that transportation has been a discussion since I came onto the council. So I'm looking forward to the strategies that the youth council come up with to make that happen, so, and I'm there to support. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you so much. And really, uh, just a quick, um, because I have a corny sense of humor. I mean, when we are serving our young people, when we get old and we're rocking in our rocking chairs, they're going to be the leaders taking care of us, and so we want to have them have good memories of us, so that they will give us, you know, good, you know, innovative rocking chairs to rock on, so.
Because at that stage, we will have no memories of them.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Really appreciate all the work you do.
Alright.
Any, I, I think so. Any other questions? Anything else, Shannon? Are we good? Fabulous work.
Oh, thanks again.
Love Day, thank you. Good to see you. Thank you for your participation and certainly for coming tonight. Next, we have a state legislative update with Shelley Helder from Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs. I think she's getting the PowerPoint ready there.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Um, I am Shelley Helder, and I have the privilege of serving as your state lobbyist in Olympia. I am here this evening to provide you all with an update on the outcomes of the 2025 State Legislative Session. Before I get started, I have to say that the R in SMART stands for relevant. I, I offered realistic, and that was not correct, says the internet. So the, um, so this is just an, a purpose of my presentation tonight. I'll provide an overview of the legislative session, focus on the specific outcomes from the city's legislative priorities, and then we'll wrap up by talking about next steps. So the 2025 session was the first year of the two-year legislative cycle. The first year is always a hundred and five consecutive days, um, and it's a longer of the two sessions because it's when the legislature adopts their biennial budgets. In addition to adopting the budgets this year, they also introduced two thousand three hundred and eighty-seven bills and passed four hundred and thirty-three into law. Because this is the first year of the biennium, any bill that was introduced that was not passed into law will be automatically reintroduced in the second year and available for consideration. Democrats maintained a strong majority in both the House and the Senate. There was uh fifty-nine to thirty-nine in the House and thirty to nineteen in the Senate. Of the one hundred and forty-seven state legislators, there were twenty-four freshman legislators um this past year. And then, of course, twenty twenty-five marks the first year of Governor Ferguson's first term in office. So, as you all know, the state has three budgets, the operating, the capital and the transportation budget. Uh, this year's budget negotiations were uniquely difficult, and we entered the legislative session facing a uh projected fifteen billion dollar shortfall over four years, and that's one of the largest fiscal challenges the state has uh faced in over a decade. The shortfall was driven by slowing revenue growth and rising caseloads, and it um kind of cast a shadow on every decision that the legislature made. The operating budget is the largest of the state's three budgets. It pays for the day-to-day operations of state agencies, uh, colleges and universities and our public schools. The primary source of funding for the operating budget are state taxes, federal funds and uh college tuition. The twenty-five, twenty-seven operating budget is seventy-seven point eight billion dollars, and it leaves two point three billion in reserves. In adopting this budget, the legislature passed bills that generate four point three billion in new revenue. Um, the largest source of that new revenue is an increase to the business and occupation tax for some businesses. The capital budget pays for the construction, acquisition and maintenance of state buildings. Um, also is for public school buildings, higher education facilities, uh, public lands, parks and other assets. It's the smallest of the state's budgets and is funded primarily through the sale of bonds. The new capital budget is seven point five billion dollars, and it leaves three hundred and forty-nine million in bond capacity for a supplemental budget. It's a relatively small supplemental budget. Um, for comparison purposes, the previous biennial capital budget was nine billion dollars. So um, a substantially smaller capital budget this year. Um, the capital budget is the source of funding for local community projects, um, and that's the amount or the amount that was allocated to that purpose, this, in this budget was two hundred and one million. In the previous budget, it was two hundred and thirty-one million. So again, a smaller amount that was distributed through that um source. Uh, the final budget is the transportation budget. It, of course, pays for transportation activities. Um, the one, there was a one billion dollar shortfall headed into um the session, a one billion dollar shortfall that was projected for this twenty-five, twenty-seven budget based on the projected revenue and their anticipated expenditures. Um, so they were faced with the option of either um cutting costs or raising new revenue or both, and in the end, they opted for both. So the twenty-five, twenty-seven transportation budget is fifteen point five billion dollars. The legislature delayed the timing of projects as a method of limiting the expenditures in the near term. And they adopted legislation generating three point two billion over the next six years. The primary source of that new revenue is a six-cent gas tax. Um, of the amount that the gas tax is increasing, two and a half percent is dedicated to counties and two and a half percent is dedicated to cities. The amount that will be coming to cities over the six years is thirty-six point two million. That's what's projected. And it's distributed um on the basis of population. So transitioning now to look at the city's priorities in the fall of last year.
Just a quick question, Mr. Bokey?
Uh, a couple of questions. Do we have any idea what our distribution will be based upon our population?
I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I can look that up for you and get back to you.
Okay, and then was, were there safe routes to schools? Was that funded, do you know? I don't know if we have any more safe routes to schools projects to do. We've done most of them, but.
That's a good question. Um, as, I, I will, I will double-check this, but I do not think there was any change to the distributed safe routes to school amount, meaning that the amount that had been allocated to that program in previous budgets, it remained steady. Um, which was a good thing. That was a win for most programs, was to keep stable funding.
Good, and then um, last question, when you say some, no new project investments, that tells, what, what does that mean?
So, that's a, that's an excellent question. So that means um many jurisdictions, when they adopted their priorities or when, you know, when they talked to their state legislators, they said, we need a million dollars for widening of Main Street. And so any of those new requests that came in this session were not included in the new budget. Though only requests that the legislature considered were alterations to either the timing or the amount that was needed for projects that have previously been funded by the legislature. So an example would be, this is not um something that actually happened, but the widening of I-5 for the um overpass at highway, exit one eighteen. That's a project the legislature has already funded, and it's something they're committed to. So if that project had come back and said, we need another ten million dollars to finish, they chose to prioritize those kinds of requests to complete projects they've already identified as important rather than to fund something new.
Okay, so the, the priority was, a lot of this is just going really to cost increases, is that what I?
That's correct.
Because it was the, the five-twenty lid project or whatever that was a huge overrun before they even started, things like that, right?
Things like that, but even projects that had, so five-twenty lid is a great example. I don't believe that project has even started construction, and so that ranked as a lower priority than a project that was under construction and they needed additional funding to maintain their contract. So um, there was tiering of what transportation projects were prioritized, and they, they had to do that because they had such limited money. I will say the transportation budget um, this year, or then it's not always the case, but this year was developed in a bipartisan fashion. So although it, there was new revenue associated with the transportation budget, um, there was bipartisan um skin in the game, uh, both in the revenue and in the spending.
So the whole, our whole I-5 project, and then I'll ask about the Nisqually, but the I-5 widening project is going forward.
Correct.
No problem.
Yes.
And then you mentioned, you're gonna, are you gonna talk about the Nisqually? Okay, you are.
I, I, I was going to, but I'm happy to cover it now, because I think it fits well with our conversation. This is an example of a project where the legislature pushed the funding into the future as a way to manage their cash flow. The I-5 um Mounts Road to Tumwater Project, something that the city has been supportive of for many years. Um, and we, we advocate on, along with many other jurisdictions in the region. There, the legislature previously allocated seventy-five million to the corridor, uh, but it was phased out over several years. The funding that was allocated in the twenty-five, twenty-seven biennium was reduced to twelve and a half million dollars. That's the amount that WashDOT indicated they needed this biennium to keep advancing the project. The rest of the funding was pushed out into the future. So the bottom line is that project's going to need um, more support in order to continue.
Does, does that include discussion, planning about either a new bridge?
Yes.
How do I say this? What the, the, what the, what the Nisqually tribe has been asking for, which is some improvement of those two bridges crossing the Nisqually River. Um, they're too small. Uh, I don't think anybody seems to argue with that, so is that part of that planning, or is that a separate?
Yes, that twelve and a half million is part of the effort that WashDOT is doing in coordination with the Nisqually tribe to find an alternative design for I-5 through the delta. There are, they've narrowed it down to two options right now, and so they're in the process of figuring out, is it the moderately expensive or really expensive option?
Good, thank you.
Yes.
Oh, Councilmember Laura Sella, anyone else standing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since we're asking questions midway through, hopefully I can jump in. I had a couple of detailed transportation questions that may or may not be within the scope of this. Uh, our Thorn Lane Connector to connect Telecom to the rest of Lakewood, I don't remember if that's a WashDOT or a Sound Transit project, but is that within the scope of this?
Um, it's not within the scope of the I-5 Mounts Road to Tumwater Project, but it, it's, so it's a WashDOT project, and as far as I know, it is on, still on WashDOT's work plan.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is in regards to the gas tax revenue, and it's just an education thing for me. Are gas tax revenues going down due to more hybrid and electric vehicles? And does this six cents per gallon offset that sufficiently, or are they still decreasing?
No, that's a really good question. So yes, um, gas tax revenues are declining because of fuel efficiency. Um, so people are buying less gas, myself included. Um, and so the six-cent gas tax is, was essentially in the only agreement that the legislature could reach. They considered the, an alternative model in contrast to a gas tax, which is a road user fee. Um, there was not the support needed in order to pass that policy, and so the gas tax was brought forward and, and the current, the state's current gas tax is not indexed to inflation, and so when costs go up, the gas tax stays flat. This new six-cent gas tax is indexed, um, and so it will go up as costs rise over time. And so that two and a half percent that the city is getting will also go up over time.
Oh, thank you.
Any else?
Thanks.
Okay, so in the fall of last year, the city Okay, so in the fall of last year, the city developed a legislative agenda with four priorities. And so I'm gonna review on the outcome of each one of those. For nearly two decades now, the city has operated a community partnership program at Western State Hospital. Um, the program provides a safer environment for patients, staff and the surrounding community. Um, the program has been incredibly successful and yet every year or every two years, we have to go back to the state and ask for them to include the funding in the new budget. This year, we asked for a three percent inflationary increase to the appropriation, which made our request six hundred and forty thousand dollars for the biennium. Uh, we began our advocacy for this request last fall, um. With the development of the governor's proposed budget. The governor um, included in his recommended budget, this increase. And although he was an outgoing governor, that set us um, up for success because the governor's recommended budget, it becomes the baseline for legislative negotiations. Um, we continued our advocacy during the legislative session and uh, with the support of the city's state legislators. Um, we were successful in securing that full request, six hundred and forty thousand dollars in the final operating budget that was signed into law. And I wanna just emphasize how significant this is because nearly every state agency was asked to cut expenses by at least six percent. And um, DSHS still remained committed to increasing the program funding for community partnership program. So it's evidence of um, the importance that they place on the program. Um, and I think the program's success overall. Um, and so one would think that with that success, it should be statutorily funded. Um, Senator Jeff Holy from Spokane thinks the same thing. He introduced Senate Bill fifty two eighty six. Which um, codifies the program both at Western State and at Eastern State Hospitals. Um, we of course supported this bill um, in coordination with the City of Medical Lake. It sailed through the Senate, um, passed unanimously out of the Senate, far ahead of the cutoff deadlines. It had a favorable public hearing in the House Policy Committee. Um, Captain Chris Westby from Lakewood PD testified in support. Uh, but it failed to advance out of the House Appropriations Committee. And so that's um, where, where the bill died. Since this was the first year of the biennium, it will be automatically reintroduced next year and can be considered again. Um, I, I'm generally not an optimist, so I'm not optimistic about the prospects next year. Simply because it obligates the state to ongoing funding and that's um, part of what has them in the budget challenges that they're in right now. Um, so it's not to say that we won't continue to advocate for it, but just to set realistic expectations. We've um, we've, we've seen this episode before. The city's second priority.
Mr. Branser?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, every year when we discuss legislative priorities and we uh. Attempt to be reasonable in terms of the number of them. Okay, and for. Multiple years because of the status of this particular funding and it's important both to. Public safety and to our, our budgeting for public safety. Um, that we have to use one of our priority notes slots for this. So for twenty twenty six. Am I? Reading that the six hundred and forty thousand is a biennial number? So that it's not a question of getting additional. We don't have to get the money authorized again next year so that, but fifty two eighty six would be. A longer term of thing to, to be able to go and do that so that it would be there. But is the. Prospect for fifty two eighty six such that when we get around to establishing our budget priorities for the twenty twenty six session? That we can? Use that space for something else this time or? Do you recommend that we really need to do it if we wanna be serious about trying to move fifty two eighty six forward?
Uh, it's a, it's a good question and I think it's a, a question for the council to consider. Uh, you're correct in your understanding that if the council wants to prioritize this in twenty twenty six, it's not a funding request. It would be a policy request to push fifty two eighty six um, across the finish line. And, and if, if that is the objective to codify this program so that every two years, the city doesn't have to come back and ask for it again. Then I would recommend that it may be maintained as a priority for the twenty twenty six agenda.
Okay, and in terms of codifying the program. How does the fact that the Western State is? Transitioning from a multifaceted hospital to a forensic predominantly. Hospital which in some. Some minds that sort of reduces the um. The community impact of the hospital since everybody is going to be sequestered there. Um, is, was, was that an element of discussions or is, or is the, you, you, in what, in what biennium do we have to? Face that issue? And I think we're still four years from that hospital being fully resolved.
Yes, that is the, that is one of the reasons that when we have um, advanced this policy in years past. We've been told we don't want to put it in statute because we don't know if the need will always exist. That wasn't the specific reason that uh, we heard the bill died this year. Um, but I anticipate that pushing it may result in a similar response in twenty twenty six. It, it's also worth recognizing that since we brought this concept forward, I think the last time we prioritized um, changed to statute. Was, I think it was twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. We've had relatively significant turnover in the legislature since then, and I think that's one of the reasons the bill sailed through the Senate. Um, in the House, there are still, there are still a lot of new members. Um, but the operating budget writers have remained pretty consistent. And so um, there, that's where we've kind of hit a roadblock.
Thank you.
Okay, the city's second priority was a capital budget request for two hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Edgewater Park. Which is in the twenty eighth legislative district. Um, we again started our advocacy for this last fall. We did a tour with Representative Mari Levitt. Um, to explain the vision for the park. Um, and then come uh, the winter time with staff support, we completed the necessary forms and. Senator Twanah Nobles sponsored this city's capital budget request. Um, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which includes the three percent administrative fee charged by Commerce. Um, was included in the Senate's capital budget as well as the final capital budget. Um, so in a year with an incredibly competitive capital budget. Um, we received the full amount plus some, which is a, a really significant outcome. In addition to this amount, the city um, city staff applied for. And the city was favorably ranked for several grants for Edgewater Park. Um, that I, I think are, are worth noting, two point two million from the Washington Wildlife Recreation Program. Five hundred thousand from the Aquatic Lands Enhancement Account and one million from the Boating Facilities Program. These grants are a testament to city staff diligence in identifying appropriate grants. And then developing really competitive applications. When capital budget writers are considering what projects, the, one of the questions consistently is, have you already applied for grants? And we are always able to say, yes, we have, and this is the final amount we need to get the project over the finish line. That's one of the reasons we're so successful. Um, so I just wanna call that out. Big shout out to park staff who do that work. And just urge you all to continue prioritizing applying for grants. The next priority was a request for two hundred and fifty thousand for a community notification board at South Tacoma Way and Ninety Sixth Street. Um, which is in the twenty ninth legislative district. This was a smaller request in dollar size, but was ironically more difficult. Um, because the project was seen as something that the city should be prioritizing within its own budget, rather than something that the state should be investing in. Um, Representative Charlotte Mena did agree to sponsor the city's uh, capital budget request. Um, but we were not successful in being included in um, the proposal or the, or the final budget. The final priority was a uh, multi-pronged request related to the state's Clean Building Act. So both City Hall and the police station must comply with uh, the state's clean building standards. And uh, the cost of compliance for City Hall alone is five point nine million. So the city requested ongoing funding for um, compliance costs. Changes to the act to allow for um, discretion on implementation and a longer timeline for compliance. The legislature passed House Bill fifteen forty three, uh, which was actually requested by the Department of Commerce, the administering agent for the Clean Buildings Act. Um, the bill provides alternative pathways for compliance. Those alternative pathways are not defined in the bill. They will be identified and defined through a rulemaking process that will begin in July. Additionally, the capital budget allocated eleven million dollars for energy, energy retrofits for public buildings. That's a grant program and five million dollars for clean building performance grants. In addition to the city's top priorities, you also have a policy manual that outlines um, the city's position on a variety of issues.
One more quick question, Mr. Branser?
Yeah, so on the, this. They passed a bill that sort of allows for discretion and there can be some honest things and, and our, and our problem was. Um, the way that they calculated the efficiency of what you're doing. It didn't work for the building that we were doing it for, uh, to be able to go and, go and do that. But so, so they, they, they've sort of, the legislature. Said that's a good idea, but they put the ball in Commerce's court. To, to do that and that, did I understand you to say that Commerce is gonna start to work on it in July?
Yeah.
So, does that mean that we should not expect that Commerce will do anything? That we can critique and ask for in the next legislative session? Or is this now really push it off into? To, you know, the, the twenty twenty seven legislative session if we don't like what Commerce does?
I, I see the question. I think my recommendation would be to engage in the rulemaking process. Um, I know that Association of Washington Cities has staff that's planning on participating. Um, and cities who are, who have relevant staff are, are having staff participate in the rulemaking process. I think depending on how the process is going, if it's looking like, yeah, there Commerce is taking our recommendations and they're, you know, developing policies that make sense. Then perhaps additional legislation is not needed. If it's, this is not aligning with what our needs are and is not going the direction that we had hoped. Um, then I think perhaps additional legislation is needed. I, I, I do think we're gonna get a sense uh, prior to the twenty twenty six session. Um, whether this um, alternative pathways is gonna be something that's actually helpful for cities.
And, 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 but more specifically, the, the, the timeline for compliance. Which was too short in our view, that actually got extended?
That's a good question. I don't know the specific timeline for complying. It's, it's different depending on building size. Um, the, one of the, one of the points that was made is that, and there should be an option for a longer compliance period. Depending on various factors. So I do know that the timeline for compliance is something that's gonna be considered.
But is that? And is that an item that is in uh? Commerce's uh? Study in their work, it, it includes looking to deal with, with timelines, you know, cause we're. Sort of going where we are, but we've got the police station we haven't actually started with on and. Um. When we have to start is very dependent upon when we gotta finish. Uh, okay, so, so again, another thing is, is this something that you think is? Gotta stay on the priority list for legislation in twenty six? Or is, as you said, more important to be um? Engaged along with A W C in the, in the rulemaking process that'll. Probably not result in any legislation in twenty twenty six, but it'll result in clarity during twenty twenty six.
It's a great question. I think it's too early to tell at this point. I think um, as we get further along in the rulemaking process, they have three meetings in just the month of July. And so I think we'll have a better sense in the coming months, um, the direction that this is headed and if it is something that's gonna need um, an additional push in the twenty twenty six session.
Thank you.
Okay, so um, the city supported legislation to improve public safety and the legislature passed House Bill twenty fifteen. Uh, which creates two pathways for funding public safety. One is a hundred million dollar grant program specifically for hiring, retaining and training law enforcement officers. And the other is Council Manic one tenth of one percent sales tax um, for criminal justice needs. We were also successful in defeating Senate Bill fifty seven fifty seven, which would have diverted fifty percent of the city's revenues. Generated from automated traffic safety cameras to the state's transportation budget. On the housing front, the legislature passed House Bill fourteen oh three, which simplifies the condominium construction and warranty requirements. Which will hopefully result in more construction of condominiums. They also passed House Bill seventeen ninety one, which harmonizes the allowable uses of REIT one and REIT two. Um, and that it also provides more flexibility to use REIT revenue towards affordable housing projects. Uh, they continued their focus on land use policies and they passed Senate Bill fifty one eighty four regarding parking minimums. Um, we opposed this bill because it didn't take into account local conditions for parking minimums. Um, which we think are best considered by the city council. It passed the legislature, um, the bill caps the number of parking spaces a city may require. Um, and the bill is limited to only jurisdictions with a population of thirty thousand or greater. So it does apply to Lakewood. Lastly, the legislature was considering House Bill thirteen eighty, which would have increased the city exposure to litigation. Um, or any city's exposure to litigation if they have laws regulating sitting, sleeping or other activities in public spaces. Um, we joined several other jurisdictions in opposing the bill. It passed the policy committee and the fiscal committee, but did not make it out of the House of Origin. Um, which we considered a success. So now that the legislative session is over, what is next? Um, the first thing is I encourage the city to consider how to recognize your state legislators. Um, gratitude goes a really long way in strengthening relationships and um, focusing on those things that the legislature. Did that are beneficial to the city is an effective way of encouraging those continued actions in future years. Um, based on what passed the legislature, there will be some implementation that's required. Um, and something the city has always done really well is when the legislature awards funds for a city project. You complete the project. Not every city is able to do that in a timely fashion. And so the legislature's being really um. Uh, there's, they're scrutinizing funding that's just been on the books for several years. And so I'm, I, I mention it as a example of what. The city should continue to do, which is funding that's been awarded for Edgewater Park, use it. Um, over the interim months, we develop an interim plan. These are the steps. Um, to help us set up to be successful in twenty twenty six, so we will continue to do that. Since this was a long session, it is a short interim and that is a non-election year for the legislature. There are seven, no, nine um, legislative races on the ballot this November. Um, so there will be some campaigning. With that, um. With that, thank you for your time and attention. I know we've had some questions, but I'm happy to answer any others.
Any other questions? Mr. Brandstetter?
I have just one topic that I'm trying to understand. In your, in your summary of things over there in this, you had a section on juvenile crime, which is a, an area that is, there is a lot of interest in Lakewood and regionally of something that seems to be out of control and what are we going to do? And our, our police chief was looking for some, some help that was able to increase the communication with officers and juvenile folks, particularly suspects, to do that. But your summary really sort of indicates that while there were a number of bills introduced, nobody was interested. And the one bill that at least got a little bit of interest was somewhat in the opposite direction of what the police chief thought would be a good way to go in the relationships between juveniles at crime scenes and the police. Other, some other public safety things did get attention of the legislature. What are the nuances around this issue that, and I'll just use the term that the legislature doesn't seem to care?
Yes, your synopsis of the summary of the juvenile legislation this session was accurate. There were a lot of bills introduced and there was nothing passed and there was not a lot of interest in changing current law. I think the current legislature thinks that the current law is working for their intended goal of protecting juveniles and making sure that they have accurate or they're well represented. When one of the bills, I don't remember which one, had a public hearing, there was quite a bit of discussion back and forth with the testifiers, which included, I believe, sheriff and police and Waspick representative of, in a scenario where there is police present and there is a witness to a crime, what, you know, what, what, what happens? Do you call the hotline that's available for a attorney that's on call? And the police chief that was there said, well, no, I wouldn't do that because there's not appropriate, there's not enough time or this scenario just didn't warrant it. And so the pushback from the legislators in that committee was, we have this resource available. The call times were reported saying that their call is answered in 20 seconds. Everyone who calls gets someone to talk to immediately. And so the legislature believes that the resources are available to provide juveniles with appropriate representation to comply with current law.
In the 28th and 29th District, are any of our six legislators on the committees that deal with these things?
That was a public hearing in the Senate Law and Justice Committee, and our senators do not serve on that committee. In the House, I do not believe our 28th District or 29th District representatives sit on, oh, that's not, that's not true. Representative Bernosky serves on the House Community Safety Committee. I shouldn't be doing this from memory. I'm going to follow up with you for sure because I'm not sure if that bill went through Law and Justice or if it went through Community Safety. I can follow up.
And I ask just because it's a question of, you know, the advice that we get is always to keep communicating with your legislators. But, you know, on this issue, I'm not quite sure what, how to emphasize it to them if they're not in a role other than that they kind of need somebody else, another committee to do something before it gets to any kind of a situation where they can begin to act on it.
I will say that even, even if our local state legislators don't serve on the relevant committees, they can introduce a bill. Or they can, they have colleagues that serve on other committees that may be more equipped to introduce a bill. And so providing them with data, the specific reasons that these changes are needed, it's helpful for them. And then they can, they can decide what to do with that.
Okay, is, are the concerns that we at the City of Lakewood have, do we mirror the concerns of the other communities that you and your firm represent? Or, like, I know on the Western State Hospital piece, we may be being parochial with that. But on the others, are we sort of in line with other folks' thinking? Or is everybody all over the board with their own priorities?
So broadly speaking, on public safety, I think there's, there's a wide array of opinions amongst the city family on what should be done, specifically on the issue of juvenile interrogation. It is, it's not a citywide opinion that the law should change. And so some cities are in a similar position as Lakewood, where they're, they're, they believe that there needs to be a change to current law. But it's not, it's not a position held by every city.
Okay, and the Association of Washington Cities was having a discussion in their legislative priorities, preliminary discussions about that the public aversion to changing the property tax level was so significant and so heard by the legislature that that's probably not something we should continue to try to beat on. Is that your sense of what people in Olympia were hearing?
In years past, yes. So in the 2024 session, that was definitely the reason that the bill didn't make it over the finish line. There was overwhelming public opposition. In 2025, there was overwhelming opposition, but it still looked to be advancing. The, the reason, my understanding, that the bill did not pass despite apparent legislative support is because the governor came out and expressed his intent to veto the bill if it made it to his desk. And so several legislators who had decided, previously decided to vote for the bill, thinking that this was going to be a policy that would be helpful, decided they did not want to use a perceived tax vote on something that would end up being vetoed. And so they withdrew their support. The bill didn't have the votes to pass.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Just a quick question on the funding mechanism with the 1/10th 1% for criminal justice funding. Is there a limitation on city size for that, or is that open to?
No, the qualifications for the funding for 2015 are based on, there's specific criteria listed in the bill. Many of the criteria the city is already compliant with. So there's, there's no cap on the amount that a city can receive based on city size. There, there is a cap on the amount the city can receive per officer in the grant program. But it's per officer.
I guess my question was, is the availability to have that particular sales tax increase limited to cities of a certain population?
No, it's available to everyone. It's available to both cities and counties. And it's not who goes first. It's you both get the opportunity to use it.
It could be a cumulative effect on the sales tax. Okay. Interesting. All right. Well, very good. Well, thank you again for your earnest and able representation of the city down in Olympia. We appreciate it. And we look forward to getting some of these projects done so we can check the mark and have a ribbon cutting and invite them back to thank them. And ask them to contribute more to the next project.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Next, we have our interim city manager, Ms. Kraus, to give us a review of the first quarter 2025 financial report.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. This is the first quarter 2025 financial report. It's a pretty thick, detailed report, so I did not plan to go page by page. But I do want to turn your attention to page 186 of the packet, which is your general industry fund summary. So for, in the last two columns, you can see that our operating revenues exceed the 2024 year-to-date actual by $3,960,331. And compared to what we had budgeted, it's up by $3,471,000. The largest piece that is causing that increase is in development services fees. And that has to do with your Western State Hospital. And then we're seeing some other increases. Our property tax increase, it's going to be what it's going to be, the 1% increase as authorized by state law. And the local sales and use tax, that is up by $113,782 compared to what we had anticipated. It's a little bit less than what we, or it's, it's compared to 2024 actual, we're actually up, but we also had increased our estimates. So those are kind of the big pieces. Our utility tax is up by $257,000 compared to 2024, but we also expected it to be higher, and we're actually a little bit short on that side. On the expenditure side, our expenditures for the operating is about $1,281,000 above what we were doing in 2024. And compared to 2025 year-to-date, actual compared to the year-to-date estimate, really that's just taking a look at the five-year period, we're actually under about $120,000. Some departments are up so for, or down. So for example, on the administrative services side, we're down on the public defender. Some of it is timing, some of it is just the amounts. But then also, a lot of these departments are basically the timing of the internal service allocations based on actual expenditures. But also on that sheet, we take a look at the ending fund balance, current ending fund balance for first quarter. And remember, this is just for first quarter only. Our ending fund balance is $15 million. And again, a lot of that has to do with the increases in the permit revenues. Any questions or just continue?
I just continue. I did have a question, even though it looks quite positive. When you look at the slides on page 184 and 5 or whatever.
Okay, so on the general and street fund?
Yeah.
Okay, so from a budget perspective, we're always going to have those numbers match. And so on that first table, you see operating revenue of 52.25, and then operating expenditures of about the same amount. When you look at the previous years, our operating revenues have been consistently higher than our operating expenditures. If I can turn your attention to the next page, which is our ending fund balance. In that first table, you'll see a 2025 year-to-date March ending fund balance of $15 million. You know, in years 22, 21 and 22, that was the pandemic. So we had a lot more ending fund balance because we took some measures to stop spending. We use those increases or ending fund balance increases to fund one-time programs. So you'll see the decrease in 2023 and a decrease in 2024. In 2025, you actually have an increase again because of the permits. That's a part where, depending how things go the rest of the year, but city council had expressed an interest in building up economic development reserves. That's potentially an area that you could take a look at.
Okay, very good.
I wasn't really going to cover anything else other than the Transportation Benefit District. And that is on, and a couple of different things, actually. On the Transportation Benefit District, our revenues are down. And the reason for that is the state had, did a system conversion. And the first two or three months, I'm just trying to find that page, revenues did not come in as anticipated. However, in the following months, we're seeing the makeup for those low distributions. The other piece I wanted to bring your attention to is on the parks recovery is about 42%. And parks recovery is about 42%. But on the public works, planning and public work side, I actually don't have a table for you. That's something because the model changed somewhat and the recovery has changed. I'm still working with the department on coming up with a table to present that. So that'll be showing up in the second quarter. And really, that's all I have for this quarter's report.
So what's your, before we open it for questions, any, I mean, it's nice to see the sales tax bump from Western State or the construction permit monies bump. What's your concern or fears as we head to mid-year, end of 2025?
I think we should still remain cautious and, you know, slow down on the spending. Departments have been very good about pausing on spending, you know, discretionary spending. But I think we should still continue that. We'll have a better picture when we go through the mid-biennium. But as you can see, like, some of our admissions taxes down, gambling taxes down. So I still think we need to be cautious. And utility tax, just not sure where that's going to go.
Right. Mr. Bokey?
Couple, couple of quick questions. Federal monies, in my day job, there's a lot of concern about loss of federal funding. There are some programs, well, and we do here at the city runs some programs that are dependent upon federal funding. Are we seeing any diminution, is that the right word, in federal funding at all?
You know, there's been talk about it, but then it's like, no, we're fine. So we see a lot of those articles and then, you know, concern is raised, but then nothing came out of it as of yet, fingers crossed still.
So on page 195, I do want to talk about the utility tax a little bit. It seems like, you know, here's this tax that just kind of moves along. Is there a reason, and I know there's, can be month-to-month variation, but when we look at this 2024 over 20, 2025 over 2024 actual, natural gas, it's 56% higher. And electricity is 29% higher. And I don't remember winter being as cold, that cold. I know there's been increases. I know there's been fairly large increases in natural gas prices. Is there a reason for that? Does anything jump out at you on that? Do you have any notes in that, I guess, is what I'm?
No, nothing jumped out. But remember, we did do a utility tax increase.
Oh, that's right. We had the little bit of increase in one part of the, what was that, one area, right? Yeah. And then, okay, we did have that. And then there was a big jump in gas, gas rates anyway. Okay. And then, I don't know, I don't know if this is a fair question for you. Page 227, abatement. And it says outstanding payments on abatement liens. And there's money, I think that's money owed to us, right?
Yes.
And it says lien year 2022. So aren't those three-year, are we expecting those to close this year?
It is three years. I can get more information. I know that we have talked about it and there's a timeline for all of that.
Yeah, I think it's, I thought it was three, it was treated like any other, again, yeah, I'm not up on the tax law. That, and does this amount include the accrued interest or?
It includes interest.
It includes the interest. Okay, all right.
Estimated interest at the time.
At the end of March?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, no, it doesn't include, they do an assessment at the time. And I'll follow up on that as well.
Okay. Because those are significant. That one is very large. It must be the largest one we've got out there ever. Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Quick question for you, you know, as you look down the road a year, two years, or three years, and we've all been kind of anecdotally told that retail sales tax is kind of flatlining. told that retail sales tax is kind of flatlining a little bit, and who knows what happens with the economy or tariffs or whatever. We do know that the cost of doing business continues to edge up a little bit. Would you ever foresee potentially coming back to the council with a recommendation on maybe considering for the first time a B and O tax above a certain level or below or whatever? And the reason why I ask is I see other jurisdictions, you know, we pride ourselves not doing that for many, many years for good reason. But with all the warehousing and distribution that we see in the Woodbrook area and Springbrook and the impact on our infrastructure and roads, one wonders whether time may be ripe at some point to have some of this development pay for the impacts of city streets.
So we have done analysis on the B and O tax, but that is really a city council policy, but we will provide all of the information.
Yeah, maybe at some point, the council's inclined to look at it down the road, worthy of another look, at least at the analysis, just to see what, because if it gets tight, there just isn't a lot of wiggle room.
Yeah.
You know, we have the cap on property tax, we can't do much more with utility tax, sales tax is what it is. I know Pierce Transit likely is going to come to the ballot at some point for the other three tenths of one percent to get from point zero six to point zero nine. The criminal justice tax, we just heard Ms. Helder talk about, may be a reality for the county or the city. So general fund revenues are challenging.
Yes, definitely. I mean, we have the three biggest sources, and some is limited, some is unpredictable, like the utility tax.
Mr. Branstadter?
One other question. This is the first quarter that I've noticed that there is a line for set aside tax increment financing property tax, where we apparently started to do something with that. Is that is that real money or is that just a hypothetical calculation?
It is actually real money, and so when we get our tax distribution, they break it up between, the county breaks it up between our regular property tax and the TIF portion of it. And so what we're doing, what I'm doing here is just really setting it aside because that is the money that we're using for like the downtown park. So we're just trying to accumulate enough money to be able to make debt service payments or other payments that are eligible. So I wanted to set that aside, but it is real money.
Okay, so, but that just started this quarter?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and so it's got a revised budget number, and then it's got a a year to date budget and a year to date actual, so I
Yes.
goes on. And the year to date actual is quite a bit higher than the year to date budget, but in this first quarter, is the, what's the significance of a revised budget number?
The revised budget number is the amount that the city council approved. So originally, when I did it, I lumped them both together based on the information that I received from the county. And so then what I did was break it out between a percentage based on the assessed value of what was on the county's tax statement. The thirty six thousand dollars, thirty six thousand, five hundred and forty seven is actually what is showing on the county reports as it relates to the TIF.
So I'm just sort of saying, this particular money while it's down there in that set aside, put in this bucket down there, but it's not shown in the revenue?
Oh, it is shown under, I put it under other sources for now, under other financing sources, just because I didn't want to get it co-mingled with the operating. And so this pot of money, when it starts to grow, I didn't want it to show up on top.
So if, but the, but the money that's, that's down there, the, the, the actuals, the, the, the thirty six thousand, that's in, in a line up here under revenues?
Oh, yes. So kind of towards the bottom middle, it'll say other financing sources, property tax for TIF future debt service of thirty six thousand, five hundred and forty seven. So that's the revenue side, and all I'm doing is taking that revenue side and setting it aside under ending fund balance reserves.
Okay, so I'm obviously looking in the wrong section because I was way up on the top under revenues.
Oh, yeah, I took it out of there just so that we wouldn't think it's operating.
Okay, so what will it look like when we start spending that money?
When we start spending that money, we would have to identify what we're spending that money on, and then if we building up for debt service, it will go towards the debt service. And let's say that it was to go towards debt service, then you'll see a line item that this money is going into a debt service fund to pay for the debt service if we were to issue the bonds.
So the biennial budget that we've approved that's in effect now didn't include spending any of that money?
No.
So when we want to spend it, we'd have to do a budget adjustment?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions? Well, thank you very much, thorough, very thorough report and good detail.
Thank you.
Next, when you get back down to your hot seat, it's reports by the city manager.
So really, what I have is just the upcoming events. I sent this all out on the city manager report. So on June seventeenth tomorrow, we have desserts on the driveway at the Tulacum American Lake Gardens Community Center. We also have on June seventeenth, between six thirty and eight P M, the summer nights at the Pavilion Concerts, country music at Fort Stilicon Park. On June nineteenth, we have the Springbrook Connections at Springbrook Park at four thirty P M. June nineteenth, we have the Phoenix Rising Wellness Blue Ribbon Cutting Event. On June twenty first, and thanks to council member Branstadter for adding this piece, we have the June twenty first, which is a Saturday, we have the Korean War Memorial Celebration between ten A M and two P M at the Korean War Memorial in Olympia. June twenty fourth, between four and seven P M, we have the United Way of Pierce County Sip and Serve Celebration Event at the Washington State Fairgrounds. We have another summer nights at the Pavilion Concerts on June twenty fourth with Classic Rock. June twenty fourth, we also have at six thirty P M desserts on the driveway at Losa for the Dower Elementary Area Neighborhood. And then we have on June twenty fourth and twenty seven, we have the A W C Annual Conference, which I believe council member Branstadter is attending that one. And then lastly, for the month of June, we have on the twenty eighth, between one P M and ten P M at the J B L M Freedom Fest Event at Cowan and Memorial Stadium. And so that's what I have for the city manager's report.
Great, thank you. Any questions? So the, the challenge with these multiple events on Tuesday nights is it makes it challenging to go to everything because desserts on the driveway is the same time as the concert series in the park. So I don't know if that's kind of a standing date for the Tulacum Neighborhood Association for their dessert on the driveway event, but if we can adjust that one in the future, it might be helpful, at least for the summertime.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Ms. Schumacher? No? I thought you were going to go to the podium and make a presentation there. Okay, very good. Okay, well, then let's briefly go to council comments. Let's start with Mr. Bokey. Very good. Council member Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to reiterate our thank you to former Parks and Rec Director Mary Dodsworth. I missed her retirement celebration, but it was good to see her tonight. Her legacy is going to endure in perpetuity in our city. I remember my first week on the job, she took me out and showed me every park in the city and knew the history of how we acquired them, what had happened there, and all the troublemakers that we were working to find better uses of their time. So I really appreciate everything she does for our city, and it will be good to see her around going forward. Public comment tonight, we heard about some challenges with our permitting for street end cleanups. I think it would be good to figure out what it's going to take to make that happen because we've made that something that we want to, to enable so people can have access, especially as we get into the, the hot weather and people want to be able to access the lakes. Our other lakefront parks are very busy, including ones that are shut down, people are still going to, so we want to make sure that we stop them from doing that and get that park opened hopefully by the Fourth of July, what I've heard is a target, but we'll see if that happens. In reference to the deputy mayor's comments about city manager search, I, I concur with what she said. I think our, our incoming city manager is going to have a learning curve for the diversity side of things, and I think it would be great to see him embrace that, and we can put that in as part of the goals and evaluation, some, some things around diversity and engagement with the community that will help drive that as a priority. City's got some big transportation projects we approved tonight to the tune of about nine million dollars, and that's, that's huge. So I look forward to seeing that stuff come home, literally. That'll be in my front yard, and it'll be a year of construction to work with. Yeah, council member Bell as well. So it was interesting to hear, and I'm glad council member Branstadter pulled it from the consent agenda to talk about how the state has put it into law to promote apprenticeship. I think that sounds like a good program, and it's nice to, nice to see that. As council member Branstadter said, it's unfortunate that it has to be put into an R C W to make it happen, but it's good to see folks developing in their careers and tying to that. Looking forward on the calendar, I will be at Farmer's Market tomorrow and desserts in the driveway afterwards. Wednesday is South Sound nine one one meeting, Friday is the Pierce County Climate Conversation Meeting, and then next Tuesday, we have another desserts in the driveway meeting to go to. And then we're going to have some time off, so happy and safe Fourth of July to everyone because that's going to happen before we get together again.
That's very true.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I also, you know, thought that the, the comments tonight about the street ends and the permitting challenges, you know, as we think of how this program's going to work and, and it's going to be slow, you know, there's one every couple of years or whatever it is, many of these street ends could be maintained or improved kind of in a, some different capacity by these, by these volunteer groups. And it would be nice to have something on our website, you know, or some sort of, here's the permitting process annually, if you want to go kind of clear out the blackberries and make this, you know, because it, it gets overgrown through the winter and spring and stuff, and you got to clean it out every year. And if there's some permits that folks need to do, if we could, you know, help, help walk them through that process, they're the ones that are going out there to do the work for us for free. The least we could do is kind of help facilitate the permits if, if, if they're, I understand there's a number of different permits, it's in the right of way, you know, it's in the shoreline jurisdiction, there's a number of things that have to get permitted and done, and it's not a super straightforward process, but we could help straighten that out for them and, and maybe come up with, you know, here's your annual permitting exercise, and here's the plan that you do every year because this is the approved plan, and you go out there and you cut this BlackBerry and you do this and that, and, you know, it's approved every year, right? So something like that, I think would go a long ways in helping some of these folks out, so that's it.
Great, council member Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, last week, I had the pleasure of going to the Juneteenth event over at the Lakewood Playhouse, and deputy mayor Moss was there, and so was council member Branstadter. So it was a very enjoyable event, great community event. I think it's their third year this year. And then I wanted to thank Shelley for coming in and giving us the legislative updates, keeping us informed and things, trying to move forward, so appreciate her time. I too will be attending the A W C Conference with council member Branstadter next week, so that should be pretty enjoyable. I'm looking forward to that. And I agree with my council members about the permits and how that was brought forward and anything we can do to help facilitate and make that easier for our residents and give them the right access and information that they need since we've talked about it and said you need a permit to do it. That information should be out there ASAP. And I look forward to working with our new city manager, Doug Russell, and moving some of the initiatives forward. I think it's a great initiative to put on there is to check in with some diversity amongst many, many other topics that we will be checking in with him. So I'm really looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Branstadter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I will say that at the Lake City Neighborhood Association, the, the, the topic about the, how do you volunteer to help at a street end came up, and the, there was a really good response to that because our neighborhood coordinator, Chris, was there, and he indicated that he had been tasked to actually put, write up the guidelines for the program to be able to go and do that, and that he is making progress, but that he has issues with the Department of Natural Resources and Fish and Wildlife to make sure that before they give anyone the go ahead to do that, that they know what to tell them they can and cannot do. And he expected midsummer to be able to have, have worked all of those things out to where it could be done, that it's, you know, so it's somewhat, it's, it's, I think the permitting process will be fairly easy to do because it's kind of like the adopt the streets and other things. It's just that, you know, it's, it's a question of knowing what to tell people that they can and cannot do to do that, and what, while we're going on. So I, I'm hopeful that the program gets a, at least a soft start this summer in that it, it, it goes on. It was iterated at that meeting that if you go through that process and you sign up for it, then you're making a commitment to do it periodically, not to go out there once. Okay, to be able to go and do that. But I think the community is interested in it, is, is, is willing, is willing to do that. I, I thought the Juneteenth celebration was I found it informative because it had a lot of historical notes spread throughout it, and so there were things that I learned that I didn't know about how the, the process of, of, of nominally ending slavery and then playing out how it, how, how it worked to be able to go and do, and to hear about it from some people who were there that had family that went through that and can kind of talk about how that, 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 that played out was interesting to me. Okay, and I was glad to do that. Again, I'm going to, I am going to be joining council member Bell at the A W, A W C Conference, and I'm looking forward to Ms. Corona Hernandez receiving her, being recognized and receiving her quality community scholarship.
Great, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I did enjoy the Juneteenth celebration. Had the opportunity to read the proclamation presented to the church that was putting it on. Good turnout, lots of fun, very, very sociable meeting. I also won two season tickets for the season.
Wow.
Yes.
For the playhouse?
For the playhouse.
Great.
For this year, so that was awesome.
Fixed.
Of course. And on Wednesday, I will be attending the change of command for Colonel, changing from Colonel McClintock to Colonel Elliott.
Thank you for doing that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So that will be at Hangar Land, 10:30 on Wednesday morning.
Very good.
But that, that's all I have.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you all for making such a short meeting, a little, little shorter for me than for you perhaps, but, uh, relatively short. Uh, I, I do feel badly missing the proclamation from Ms. Dawsworth, but I've got her on speed dial because she and I will be working on some H Barn project work in her capacity for Parks for Parks. And so I will never say goodbye to Mary. I will just say, see you later. Uh, but I do want to provide my comments about her longstanding 24 plus years of incredible service to this community. And the significant amount of work she did on any number of grants to be able to fund so many of these projects for the benefit of residents. It really can't go without saying thank you enough because of all of that significant work. It's made our park system really what it is today. So thank you, Mary. Desserts on the driveway, uh, challenging on Tuesday because I really would like to go to see the first concert of the season. Uh, just to kind of be present there. So I will probably, I will be at the, uh, Farmer's Market on Tuesday, tomorrow night. And I will not go to the dessert on the driveway event if there are plenty of you there just to spread our, our presence a bit. So that sounds like we have a few of you there. Desserts on the driveway. That'll be good. Um, I have received in terms of some comment in emails, maybe you guys receive them as well. Concerns over some American Lake water level issues. I don't know, Ms. Kraus, have you seen that email as well? I know Mr. Remac was working on a response to one of the commenters. Uh, and I, I think that there is some legitimate concern. Mr. Branstad, do you have a comment on that?
Yes. And this is a, this, this is not a new issue. It's one that's percolating since the beginning of the summer. And it was, is, is one that I, it's, since it's a county really issue.
Yeah, they control that.
I have had some conversations with the councilmember Hitchen uh, uh, about it. And she has provided feedback that she has had some conversations about it with the relevant county staff.
Okay, great.
So I, I, I don't, she, she didn't have any feedback yet to go on. And I think that the American Lake Management Group that had their meeting days ago, the, 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 this, this was discussed there and it was circulated. But, uh, I, I do think that councilmember Hitchen is aware of it and, and, and is trying to find out what the, the, the resolution is to be able to go, go in and, 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 and modify the policy to the benefit. So, but, uh, she is aware and, uh, I, I don't know which staff department at the county i- is, is involved, but.
Well, it's a matter of leaving two boards in is what it comes down to. Leaving two boards in the existing weir that keeps the water level at 233 feet above sea level as opposed to 231.
Yeah, yeah. Part, part of the thing is, is that's the, the creek that the water ends up going into
Uh huh.
is like Clover Creek. It goes dry in the summer.
Right.
And so folks in DuPont, you know, are looking for water.
Right. So it, it obviously is a little bit more complicated than having a few boards in the weir, but it is an issue that people are interested in out there for sure. Um, in terms of events, I am going to go to an event tomorrow, uh, for the, it's with the Lakewood Chamber, but it's Sergeant Major of the Army is making an appearance here in Lakewood. Uh, the army, yep. And so I'm going to go to that event tomorrow morning. And then the 250th birthday of the United States Army, uh, will be celebrated at Hotel Murano with, uh, General McFarlane and others. And I'm going to attend that, uh, my personal capacity, but certainly on behalf of the city as well. So I don't know if anyone else, uh, plans to go to that, but that's where I will be on Wednesday evening. Which also happens to be my birthday. So I'm going to tell them that it's not really their celebration, 250 years. It's my celebration of 62 years, but. Yeah, exactly. Exactly. And then I will be, uh, out of the country from the 19th of June to and through the 2nd of July. So, uh, if people are asking my whereabouts at the various events, uh, Ms. Kraus indicated that is our, are on our calendar, please let them know and give them my regards for that. But I'm heading to a wedding in Warsaw, Poland. So hopefully things will be somewhat calm overseas while I'm there. Uh, and that is all I have. So right now, council's going to recess into executive session for approximately 15 minutes pursuant to RCW 4230 110 sub 1 sub I to discuss a legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body or member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party. And public knowledge regarding the discussion could result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. City council is not expected to take any action following the executive session other than to come back and to adjourn this meeting. So at this time, we'll be in recess.